Tonight's Galton Municipal Planning Commission Work Session Meeting. It's not a voting agenda meeting, so we don't have to have a forum to get started with the discussion. We have seventeen items on to discuss tonight, four of which have been deferred. That's numbers two through five, plus some discussion at the end of the bylaws and the comprehensive plan update. So we'll go ahead and get started with item number one, which is South Water Avenue Parking Lot Site Plan Joey's Flooring and Blue Line Guns. Josh?
Are you up? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for a parking lot directly serving Joey's Flooring and Blue Line Guns on South Water between Main and Smith Street. So the applicant is proposing to pave this lot previously, once upon a time, and had a building on it that's been removed for as far back as most people's memory can go. They are expanding this as part of their regular business operations. So this is not a parking lot that will be open to the public. They are paving the lot, but they do need a, an alternative buffer for the side of the property that faces South Water. There will be landscaping in that area between the back of sidewalk and what's going to be a wall between the two existing buildings.
Good question. Is this, just so I have an bearing, is this the area where temporary, on a temporary basis, they've had the wildflowers?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's the, the mayor specifically worked with the flower lady whose name
Belisha.
Is going to come to me as soon as Mary Ann reminds me, to relocate a lot of the plants and the flowers from that garden. And there is still a small patch that's in the city right of way in a landscape island on South Water directly adjacent to the property.
Okay. Do we have a representative for the applicant present? If you will, please come forward and state your name.
I agree.
Gregor, do you have anything to add?
Oh, you hit it pretty good. We just need, we've been, we've lost the area we have been using for parking for about thirty years. It's been sold and the new owner asked me to move out, so gotta have place park, so propose to do this and continue business.
I assume the access will be off South Water?
No, it's off the alley.
Oh, it's off the alley, okay.
It's not.
Public parking or private?
It's private.
Um, questions? Could you?
How many blocks?
How many parking spots? It'd be about eight.
But just so that I understand the plan, are you, actually, you're proposing to build a brick wall along the?
We're planning on it, yes, sir.
It'll look really nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions or? Looks pretty straightforward. We appreciate you letting, appreciate you letting the city use the lot for beautification purposes in the interim. Thank you.
Send me a lot of weeding there for a few years.
That's true, yeah. All right, thank you very much. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Items two through five have been deferred at the applicant's request. Item six is Fairview Pizza and Pub Patio Expansion, amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan. View Pizza LLC. Josh?
Sharon is going to be the project planner for this one.
It's down in the Publix Center at Greensboro Village. Most of you know where that is, and the Fairview Pizza is on the western end of the, and they're going to use three of the, well, actually, they're taking out some of the handicap parking spaces. And they have designated those as they're out in the parking lot, and they're adding a ramp to make sure that they're ADA accessible. And we don't. The whole Greensboro thing, I think on the other end of the development, there's, one of the other restaurants had added a patio at one time. So that's all they're doing. It's about eight hundred square feet to take up some of the parking spaces and just an outdoor patio area. Any questions? The developer's here.
Okay, just, yes, if we have a representative for the applicant, please come forward and state your name. Just while he's coming forward, can you show us on the plan exactly where the outdoor patio is? I don't really see it.
There's what it's gonna look like, and it just comes out from the end of the, I don't know if I can get it back. Does it have a pointer on it, Josh? Okay. If you look for the handicap spaces, they're marked off right there in the middle. There it is. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's the area where they're gonna have the patio.
I understand.
And they moved the others out into the park, made up for them by moving out to the parking lot with the other handicap spaces.
All right. Yes, sir. Go ahead, and if you'd state your name.
My name's Eric Brody, I'm one of the owners of Fairview Pizza. Um, what she was just saying is actually accurate. We're gonna take those two handicap spots and just move them to the front. That way, the handicap spots will still be part of the restaurant. There will be a fence, a black fence around it with some landscaping as well.
Shows the fence around the patio.
I'm assuming there's still adequate parking to meet the requirements, but, okay. Yeah. But with the landscaping on the corner and where that sits, that's at a good a place as any to add a patio.
So I would agree.
I don't have any problems with it myself.
Questions or discussion? Pretty straightforward. Good luck. Sounds like a good, thank you. See you back in a couple of weeks. Item number seven is Red River Townhomes Final Master Development Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Final Master Development Plan for the recently approved Red River Townhomes FMDP. There, this is the general location right where Red River Road and Long Hollow Pike come together. The FMDP matches pretty, pretty closely to what the PMDP approved, and it did reserve a future area in the southeast corner of the property where potentially the city could acquire a future right of way for improvements to the Red River Road Long Hollow Pike intersection, as was discussed at previous planning commission meetings with the PMDP. There's some detailed work that's needed for this at the FMDP at recent middle, but they're mostly minor, minor items that staff would be able to work out with the, with the applicant. They don't, they don't substantially change the FMDP from what was approved at PMDP. And I believe, yep, the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Yes, we have a representative with applicants. Please come forward.
This is our exec maker with Greenwood Design. I don't have anything to add. We agreed to the comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
How many, how many units?
Eighty-three.
I'll direct a question to our city engineer. The area that they've reserved to the southeast corner, is that adequate space for, right away for a roundabout, if that's what you choose to do in the future?
Yes, sir. It does appear to be, based on what we laid out and what we thought TDOT's requirements would be.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then no other discussion, and we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you. Item number eight is Oak Hill Subdivision Sketch Plant.
Yes, this is for the remainder of the Oak Hill subdivision. As you might recall, there are about three phases that are currently built in that area. We have had a sketch plant in the past for this, but that has previously expired. They never had any development on that. So a new group has come in and purchased the property to do a new sketch plant. Now, this is straight zoning. These, this area is owned R fifteen and R twenty, so it doesn't require a master plan. So they just have to do plating, so that's why we have them do a sketch plant, figure out some stormwater things early on, preliminary plat, and then final plats. With it also being straight zoning, they'll have to meet all the standards for the setbacks. They can't ask for exceptions from anything like that. So this is for two hundred and twenty, twenty-three single-family lots. We had a number of comments. It is a very similar layout to the previous sketch plot, but we did have some comments about evaluating slopes in this area. There are some pretty steep slopes on some lots. We want to make sure that's not creating unbuildable lots. We also have a number of stormwater areas and stream buffers that in the previous version were in open space tracks. And we'd like to see a similar thing here where we don't have lots that have a lot of stormwater and stream features within their boundaries. So we have asked for revisions on that. Some clear phasing, I believe the plan shows phasing, but it's just not very clear. So just needs some cleanup, a couple more sheets kind of really detail what we're looking at, clarify some of the buffer yards. Well, once we, once we get that, this is, this is relatively consistent with these straight zonings. Being a straight zone, architecture is a little bit different than with a master plan. We have asked for some information about the architect or how they intend on handling that, how HOAs would be handled with the previous phases. So hopefully with some clarification, we can get that with this, with this plan, and I believe the applicant is here.
Yeah, we have a representative for the applicant. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Is that Victor with Greenlit Design? Again, we agree to all comments. I don't have anything to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Got any challenges getting the roads in with the topography out there?
Yes, sir, but we were willing to work with engineering on that to make it, to make it work.
Yeah, do y'all have any concerns that we need to talk about?
The more scarce that land is, the more challenges that we're gonna have. And just down the street, we're working with Greenlit on another design, the Bella Vista. It's kind of that necktie-shaped property that's coming off of thirty-one E. And we're having some, some iterations going back and forth, fifteen percent max slope on, on roadways. And so they should be prepared to deal with design for this by the time we get there.
Challenging site. I've, I've been back in that property years ago, so.
This property's been before us a number of times, a number of changes to it. I think maybe even at one point, it was, part of it was set aside for like a business incubator.
Yeah, part of the industrial center.
Park extension. Does the road layout change on the sketch plan from what was previously approved?
Not from our, our latest sketch plan, but as you mentioned, maybe ten years ago, we had a layout that actually had a road that went into the, the north end of the industrial center. But the last approval did not include that because they just went, you know, all residential.
Okay. I know that at one permutation of this plan that we've discussed, there was an issue about the continuity of the common sidewalk up here in the northeast section or the top right section. Do you recall what I'm talking about, and is that addressed with this new plan? There was an issue of continuity in the sidewalk because there's a string that runs through there.
Right, but yeah, well, that's, that is part of the existing section. It's already developed. We do have it constructed.
Then that's non-issue.
You'd have to build essentially a stream crossing for the sidewalk there, and it's been done.
Sounds like it's been longer since I've been up there than you've been up there.
And I think some of that sidewalk was actually constructed on the property owners. I've got it correctly, or really close to them. So they'll have to look at this for these lots. They would also have a sidewalk requirement. The last sketch plot had it be consistent with the other phases, so I imagine they'll do something similar here with a fence and some landscaping and things like that.
It's my only, my only other comment would use, with the, this obviously will have to have a second entrance to make it work. And I know the topography in that area where that entrance is, is challenging to say the least. So just make sure y'all stay paying special attention to that, that it'll actually work.
It goes just off of this property, and I actually expect at some point in the future that Martin Lane could be and would be relocated to line up with this, this roadway. It's, so you, you can't really get to, and not that Martin Lane is a good angle to come into anyways. You can't really, with this development, you can't, you can't take it far enough to the west to line up with Martin Lane. But what I envision is that Martin Lane at some point in the future would actually be pushed further to the east and line up with this. And I hope that if and when the farm across the street develops, we would be looking at doing that. But it would, it would line up really nicely with this and come into thirty-one E at much better angle, ninety-degree angle.
Any other questions or discussion? CNN, and then we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is Bloods Springs amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Julian?
Yes, so this project is a single-family residential project, owned R eight planned residential development, and they are proposing the final master development plan for this plan. It is on forty-six point eighty-three acres. As you recall, this includes part of the railroad easement, and part of that is within this development, but it's not going to be developed. It'll just serve as a natural buffer. The layout is generally the same. They have reduced it by four lots, so it is a hundred and thirty-one lots for stormwater reasons. It is generally consistent with the PMDP. I know they'll have to address some stormwater questions of stream buffers and areas that are within lots. And then they did include architectural elevations. I've asked for some clarifications on some materials to make sure that we are consistent with the PMDP. And then a little bit of clarification throughout the plan, but generally we are consistent with the PMDP.
Okay, yeah, we have a representative for the applicant.
Megan Heisler with Greenwood Design. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Well, I'll, I'll leave with one, and I'm not trying to introduce something new because I'm really going from memory until I read the staff report. But I thought at each point this has gone through, we talked about larger sized lots on the, I'm assuming, okay, the north is pointing to the right of page, so it would be the eastern boundary. I don't want to introduce something new if that's not the case.
I, I think I can address that, and I think I remember what happened. So the first version did, that did make it through, but I don't believe planning commission recommended approval for the most recent version, and so that did not make it to city council.
Question?
Is the, the stormwater elements, are those all in common areas, or is that part of what the comment was about stormwater being on some of the lots that needs to be addressed?
Bauer retention areas and detention ponds there within open space.
I think our stormwater team was mostly talking about stream buffers. There are some on the rear of some lots, and I think they would like those addressed.
I think we, we've talked about that on other developments that. I think we've, we've talked about that on other developments that it's a good idea to get those out of the lots into common areas or so to reduce the risk of the homeowner encroaching on that. So.
You're spot on, Mr. Harris. That is something that we made the comment. You know, we don't have anything within our, our regulations to require that, but this has been a direction that our, our planning commission has gone for a number of years now. And so that's why we made the comment and, you know, we're.
You know, and I, I know for myself, if it, if, if it meant making an exception for some lots to have a smaller lot size, but to get that separation, I think that would help us accomplish our goal. So.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess my, my comment on it would be if, if getting those stream buffers out of the actual lot, even though it meant the lot size had to be all smaller, I, I would not oppose that.
We were wondering if we could put it within an easement in the building envelope, be out of the stream buffer. Just so we can keep lot sizes. And we could even add a note on there to not build within that stream buffer if we needed to.
I think the challenge becomes how do you ever enforce that, you know?
Is that a non-disturbed?
It's a no mo. Yeah.
My, my other question regarding the stream buffer is the connection at the back to Valley Ridge Drive. The, the connection is actually on top of the stream buffer side. I would look at the grading associated with that road to make sure you're not getting into that stream buffer either. I don't know if you can make a different radius on the road.
We, yeah, we had noticed that too. And we were more concerned about the, the number of homes that would have this buffer in the yard. Just we, we were willing to, for, for the sake of connectivity to, to allow that. But, but yeah, there's, there's probably dozens of homes with, with buffers located within the yards and significant encroachment to.
And I, I, I'm not as familiar with this property. What, what is currently in that stream buffer? Is it, is it wooded? Is it a field? What's, what's there now?
I, I think it's mostly more of a field.
I think towards the western.
Agriculture.
The western portion is wooded. Towards the very back though, I don't, I don't think, I think it's just grassed.
I don't, if you're looking it up on.
Yeah, I'll see. No, go ahead.
Any other discussion? Or questions? Then we'll sit back in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Megan. Item number 10 is Town Place Fairfield Suites Village Green Crossing Site Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposed hotel at the intersection of Tula Poplar and Village Green Crossing. This is a adjacent to the I think that's a Hampton Inn and Suites and a residential property. If this, if this project makes, goes forward, it will be as a site plan. The plans were originally submitted for a PMDP, but the zoning allows for a direct to site plan. So they would be construction level drawings. Staffs, both engineering and planning have been discussing the, the overall layout, the proposed layout of the site. And there's, there's a couple of issues. The access drives do not meet our zoning ordinance. The overall building height may not, may exceed the 60-foot that's established within the CG zone. There's other pieces of detail that were missing from the overall plan. There's some, there's some grade change, grade challenges that are on this site that we definitely need more detail about how retaining walls, setbacks, and landscape buffers all work together with a pool deck. That was not made abundantly clear on how all of those can coexist in the same 10-foot space. There's other things related to internal workings of the building and grease traps and how that could be serviced on the backside of the building where there is no vehicular access. At the pre-up, when this came in, staff recommended that the building be pulled up closer to the road to be able to better space out those driveway entrances and allow for a better overall fit. The applicant has chosen to go with a layout that you see currently, which does lead to several problems with the overall layout, access to the site, driveway access, how all of the, how all of the things that are required for that hotel work together. They will also need an architectural alternative. What they're proposing does not meet the 70% brick or stone than the C. I keep saying CG. Within the CG zoning district. So they will need a design exception for the building itself. There are, they are proposing mostly an EPIS material versus the brick or stone requirement. Happy to answer any questions. I believe someone representing the applicant is here.
Yes, sir. If you would, state your name for the record.
Yes, Daniel Whitley with Honor Consulting Engineers and.
I'm Greg Mayo. I'm the architect for the building.
We actually, talking with the client, we're going to, we're trying to look at revising the layout to pull that more towards the center of the property. And we're actually going to go ahead and defer to September's meeting.
Okay.
We mainly wanted to come here tonight just to get some feedback from the board on the building elevations. Obviously dealing with the brand, we're tied a little bit to what, what we can and can't do. But I'll let the architect speak a little bit more to that. But we are actively trying to get the layout pulled a little bit further where we can get more parking around outside.
Okay. Well, we're happy to talk about the architecture tonight. And when you adjust the building layout a little bit, we can set up an internal meeting with engineering, planning, our codes department, if you needed to talk through some of the layout changes on the site to make sure that we're all heading in the right direction.
Sure. We were actually going to try to set that up for this week.
I, I actually think that there's a, there's a voicemail from you that I have, haven't gotten to respond to yet today.
But we are going to try to address some of those additional comments on the site layout itself. But mainly, we wanted to get just some feedback on the, the building elevations, just to try to see if we can, what we can and can't change. So.
Though, if I understand correctly, you're going to modify the site layout, but you're looking for some feedback as to whether we'll grant the height. You did say it requires a variance in the height, didn't you, Josh?
Potentially. The drawings did include a total maximum height elevation because it's a flat roof. There is a 60-foot maximum from base of grade or from the bottom of the building to the top of the parapole wall.
Yes, I can speak to that. Again, my name's Greg Mayo. I'm the architect for the building. I was looking at the study today and, and the maximum height parapet, we can, we can keep under that 60 feet. Right now, we're looking at 59 feet. That may adjust downward from the 59 feet, but the 59 feet would be the two end stair towers. That's the tallest, tallest height of the parapet. So it's 59 maximum, and it's likely that's going to go down from that. Speaking to the architectural requirements, as Daniel mentioned, this is a new, this hotel is a dual-brand Marriott dual-brand hotel, Town Place Suites in Fairfield. This is a new design aesthetic that Marriott corporate has developed for this dual-brand hotel. The original prototype was almost 100% of the EPIS synthetic stucco. We however are proposing brick on the first floor, brick on the stair towers, as well as we could also do brick on that center dark shaded gray area. I noticed reading through the requirements, there is a 70% requirement for brick. One of the questions I have, if you could be addressed this evening or further staff comment, is if the 70% is inclusive or exclusive of the windows. That would be an important question for us to know. But, but again, this is primarily EPIS synthetic stucco brick for the first floor and stair towers. And then the EPIS stucco would be a two-tone with, with patterning that you see there. Again, this, this, this project is in concept, concept stage, but it does have the correct room counts and the correct number of floors. And so some of the details, the exterior may develop, may vary slightly. But also we're asking for input from the board, from the aesthetic.
Issue of whether the windows are addressed or included in the total square footage has been defined in our ordinance. Y'all have a comment. We've talked about that before. So I'm sure the staff can send you that.
Okay.
Do you know the answer offhand, Josh?
The net facade, it is the net facade, so it does exclude the windows.
Okay.
It excludes the windows from calculating the square footage.
Yes. Right. So it's the overall, the overall square footage of the building, remove the windows, and then what's remaining has to be the 70% brick or stone. I think we'd have a lot of monolithic buildings if it was all 70% brick or stone with no, with, with the windows included.
Are you looking for kind of an opinion from this committee as to whether there will be variance granted to the 70% brick and stone? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, that, again, this is a, this is a prototype, proposed prototype that Mary was asking for. So we're just kind of asking for some give and take. We're willing to, to increase some, some of the brick material. And but at the same time, we want to be sensitive to what Marriott's trying to achieve with, with the aesthetic of this new, new, new prototype that you're developing.
Don't want to offer any feedback on that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to get some feedback on that. I, the, your overall look and the, the, just the aesthetics of the building, I think, would great. So and, and that's clearly more the design trend with hotel-type properties nationally. So I don't, I think we're going to see more of this type of architecture as it goes. As far as the 70% brick, you can't get this architecture book and put 70% brick on the building. It wouldn't work. So, so, you know, my, my opinion, I think it's good if, if you can get closer to the 70% brick and still keep the, the design intent, then I think it'd go a long way. But.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with your, with your comments. That's why I feel that center portion there, that's the darker gray, that's got the Town Place Suites sign logo on it. That we, for now, it's, it's shown as a synthetic stucco, but I feel from the, to get closer to what the requirements are, we can do that element as a brick element.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be curious to see when you, when you make that change, what the calculation is. So, but I, I think we, we have the ability to have some flexibility where it makes sense with architecture and this type of product is, is probably a place that we would need to look at.
Bill?
I was just going to ask if that, have they built this hotel in another location?
Not. I'm trying to recall if there's one in Nashville. There's not one in this general outline areas in Nashville. I know that this, this is a really brand new prototype that took its last year, 2020. And so it is, it is a fresh, fresh concept.
If, if you're aware of where they have one like this, if there, you could get a photograph of it, I think that would be helpful to the board. Thank you.
My question, if you move the building closer to the street, where is the main entrance of the hotel going to be?
It would still be.
On the street side?
Would that, that would allow you to get that second entrance over on Tula Poplar? Would that allow you to get the distance and separation?
Get that second street or entrance on Tula Poplar back further.
That would be a good idea.
Any other questions or discussion, comments?
If it helps with the dialogue, the adjacent hotel is the Hampton Inn and Suites. It's 100% EPIS. The sleep-in that was recently constructed, the front of the building is brick, but I don't believe the sides of the back are. And the Little Stone at Village Green Apartments, the apartment complex that this site backs up to, also have a mixture of vinyl siding and brick.
The Hampton Inn is 100% EPIS?
Yeah, you kind of go with the architects, right? I don't have a problem with EPIS as a building material on this type of architecture. Rule, you know, it worked better in the past when most everybody was building with brick and that was the look, but it's, that's not what the trend is. And I don't think it's going to come back anytime soon. It's my opinion.
Any other discussion? Then we'll see it back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Well, no, actually, y'all are going to defer for the, we'll see it in September then. Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be a good-looking product.
Item number 11 is 114 Cold Fairy Road, Site Plan, Alternative Architecture.
Yes, this, this property is located at 114 Cold Fairy Road. This is very close to Southwater, close to the, the Gildom Elementary School. This is the site plan from 1997. The owner came in front of us a couple of weeks ago, and they had built a new storage building on the rear of their property without a building permit. So they quickly came in to rectify that with the codes department in our department. They've already met with codes to figure out what they needed to do. And now they are going through and meeting the site plan requirements for us. This is the site plan that, that this was an active business before. They purchased it a couple of years ago and continued a similar business in the building. This was, so this was the front of the building. There's a metal, it's a metal building for repairs and various sort of sales. And they built a building on the rear. It is not attached and is a pavilion for storage purposes on the rear of the property. It is the same material as the existing building on the property. It is back behind this building and it is shielded from view with a full-grown buffer yard along this property with a tree line surrounding that whole back area. That backyard is mostly used for storage. They have also met with our stormwater team and addressed any concerns they had about stormwater in that area with the, the water quality management through that buffer yard. And that if they do any more changes or pave the property, they would have to come and do further stormwater mitigation. The reason they have to come in front of you is that this is an alternative architecture. It does not meet the brickstone requirement, and it is a new building. It is compatible with the existing building on site and is compatible with many of the commercial buildings in this area. So I wouldn't say that this is inappropriate for this area, and it's not really visible from the road. So the applicant is here to address any questions that you have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, representative for the applicant.
Nick Harley, I'm the owner. Nick Harley, property owner.
Do, do you have any, any comments or?
No, that's pretty much sums up what we're looking at doing. So.
Okay. Is, is that building, is that going to enable you guys to store more stuff around the back as opposed to out, out front or?
Yeah. So with all the trees that we have around us, it's all like those Chinese, the ones that like really shed stuff. And so we have like light colored floats and, and jet ski ports and things. And so that's what's going to be stored in there. So then we don't have to power wash everything before we install it.
The, the building meets setback requirements?
Yes, sir. All setback requirements.
As far as the alternative architecture, I mean, it, it matches the building. It's already there. You can't see it from the street. I, I don't see any problems with this. Anybody else have an opinion? So, all right. I think it's pretty straightforward. We'll see back in a couple of weeks. All right. I'll probably thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 12, which is 240 West Broadway, Site Plan Change, Change of Use. Who's representing this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. This is a change of use site plan. This was previously the old Sumner Bank and Trust Building in the HG Hill Overall Plaza. It is a separate lot from the overall plaza. The applicant is wanting to change this from a financial services use to a retail use to be a cigar bar or a, a cigar lounge and sales. So this requires a change of use site plan. They are, they will be required to install. they will be required to install landscaping and make some site improvements. The landscaping sheet that you see on the screen before you and including your packet does show a full buffer yard in the front. They are exempt from the interior buff, the interior buffer yard because of the shared access with the adjacent property. And the railroad track and back, they are exempt from that rear yard, buffer yard requirement as well. They do have a three lane drive through that they intend to keep with the building in case a future tenant should need it. So they will, they are amending their side yard buffer to put the same amount of landscaping in a slightly less space.
Do we have a representative for the applicant?
Good evening, Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group. And thank you. I'm working with Josh through comments. I'm going to answer any questions.
You have any questions?
Are they changing the facade of the building?
They are not. We do not require changes to the building. As long as it's in, in good shape and not a hazard to the public.
As a person, I mean, I think that the buffer yard in the front's an improvement to, to what's there. So I don't, I don't see any problems with this or have any concerns with it. I will probably be a customer. It's my disclosure for the evening. Engineering, you guys have any concerns? Pretty straightforward. We'll see you back a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
Let the chairman take back.
What, what item?
On item thirteen, sir.
Item thirteen is one seventy six Factory Street Alternative Architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, an alternative architecture for a building that has already been constructed at one seventy six Factory Street. The presentation has better pictures that were included in the overall agenda. Thanks to Jim this morning, who went out and got some good photos of the site that are not here. Give me one moment and I have some pictures of the site as it is currently installed now. The building itself is overall a metal a three bay metal garage that does match the existing building that fronts on Factory Street. The building itself is set back from Factor Street in good ways. That is not in this presentation. I'll send those out via email after the meeting, but the present, the overall building looks very similar to what's being shown on the screen, which is what was submitted for a building permit. It does meet the setback requirements and it does match what
Did you say does or does not?
It does meet the setback requirements and the overall building itself matches what the front building and the two buildings to the left and to the right of the site. They're also of a metal finish. And this is a C G. Yes, a CG zone property on Factory Street. It backs up to the railroad tracks and it's industrial uses on the other side of Factory Street from it.
Did they not have the right to build this by straight zone?
What we've learned after this permit has been issued is that because of the, our, some of our current interpretations is we are going to start requiring site plans for all commercial outbuildings, commercial structures and commercial expansions on any commercial or industrial. We don't see them very often. We did the math and it might be about an extra three projects a year just to ensure that all of the information that's needed is being captured.
All new buildings for site plan, they have to meet the architectural requirements, but if they don't want to, that's why they're here. Otherwise, if they built a brick accessory building, like this, they inbuilt at least seventy percent brick or stone, they wouldn't be here.
So do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Shell Hanes Oak Tree Harvesties.
You want to add anything?
No, except that it's taken us nine months to build a building that was supposed to be done in three. And we jumped through every hoop. We thought we had a, a building permit and then we get an occupancy permit. We find out we don't have a building permit. That it was done by mistake. And it, it was, worked with Josh all along. They did everything they were supposed to do. And all the inspections they were supposed to have. But we have a temporary occupancy permit at the moment.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I thought I heard you say was that this, if it has gone through the process from the very beginning, this is in complete compliance. This looks fine.
We thought we had done this in the very beginning. I left it up to the contractor. In fact, he sent me an email and he, we talked about it back in December and January and they said, well, we've got to go to the planning commission. Well, he came back to me and he said, well, we went to the planning commission. But I don't know if his view was coming here or if he was talking to Bill or I, I still don't completely have that story, but thought at the time he had done everything he was supposed to do. And by getting all of his inspections, I mean, nobody had any problems. We looked for an occupancy.
So it's, it's there. So now it's just a question of whether or not it's okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a garage. It's a metal garage.
That's just everything around it. I don't have a problem.
How did he get a building permit? Or did he not? I didn't think they issued a building permit.
All the inspections were done by everybody. We got, I mean, I've got all the inspections. If anybody's interested in seeing them, but Josh, Josh, Josh has got them all, so.
Is this something, when you, I mean, is, is there a link or broken link in the communication? Should building codes have issued a building permit without a stamp from planning?
I've been trying to dance around the fact that I was the one that signed off on the I'm sorry. I fully am willing to admit to, uh, think when things happen. The first review on this was failed because of those issues. It was then resubmitted. And I don't know if I hadn't had my coffee yet that day. I don't, I, we don't know. I don't know specifically where that breakdown occurred other than I clicked a button and said, accepted.
No, but Josh, now that I publicly shamed you, my work is done.
Somebody from coaching came out and inspected it, you know, at that time to look at the other buildings around it and saw that everything is metal, so.
I think the good news is we can help put this to rest.
My tenant will appreciate.
I agree. Is anybody else, is everybody kind of feeling the same way? Then we'll see back in a couple of weeks. Thanks. Item number fourteen is Carrollton Subdivision amended preliminary master development plan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, was previously seen on the work session in I'm going to say May. The applicant has taken some of the feedback that the council and staff gave him about the overall the overall project and the way it was laid out. So with the amendments to the rear two phases, the townhomes were removed. So it's all single family residential. The entitlements are closer to what it was originally entitled for and the applicant has shown conceptual drawings on how the larger tracks, tracks one track five, track three, track four, five, six, seven, and eight, how those could be accessed. They've always been entitled to be large lots on five acres or more. So what the applicant has done is now showed how those potential driveways could be shared and connect into the overall subdivision. Those entitlements have been there since the beginning of the overall project. So we are not treating that as a a change to the a major amendment to the subdivision. Or we are not recommending that as a major amendment to the subdivision. And I believe Lynn is here to, if you have any questions about the remaining phases of Carrollton.
And, and this, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, this one is also formally shows uh, single family homes on the larger tracks. That may or may not be planted. I don't know what size they are, but uh, these would be more like a state type home, I guess, that would be placed up on the hillsides.
Oh yeah, go ahead, Lynn.
Eli with Land Solutions Company. That's correct. Yeah, we, they've always been intended to be estate tracks and they're greater than five acres. So we would likely not plow them just because you don't necessary. But we thought it was a good suggestion. Like Josh said, we were here a couple of months ago and had some staff comments at the work session. We took those back and one of those was that it may be a good opportunity to go ahead and show what the use of those larger tracks would be and sort of think through it. And we thought that was a good idea. So we've done that here with the idea that maybe we won't have to do this again. I think we're on our, probably our twentieth amendment of this. PMDP. So fingers crossed, this is the last time around. The, the Josh pointed out that one of the most significant changes from when we came to the work session in May uh, was that we had shown sort of a, at the, the top of the page is, is phase eight, future phase eight. The center portion of that was proposed to have attached product and there are some of the same attached product that we have already constructed in the neighborhood. But, you know, we crunched the numbers and, and considered some other factors. Uh, one of those being that, uh, what's the expectation of the neighborhood as it's built out from existing residents? And decided that it's probably in everybody's best interest to do the rest of it. All single family. So that, that's the most significant change you see from when I was here to talk about this in May. I wanted to touch just a little bit on lot count because previously we had, when we had submitted this in May, we were increasing the total lot count by approximately twenty five units. Uh, since we've made that change to remove the sink or the attached product. You can look at this in a few different ways. I'll just tell you how we look at it. The plan is it's currently approved is seven hundred and fifty three total lots that also allowed for the potential of twelve estate estate lots, but the estate lots were never really planned by anybody, including us. Since we made the change to reduce the, 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 or remove the attached product, it reduced the total lot count. So it, that went from seven fifty three to seven fifty six. So an increase of three what I would call smaller lots. But we have, since we've land planned the large tracks, we have gone from twelve to seven. So the request that's here today, in, in our opinion, is a reduction of two lots in total for the entitlement of the project. So I bring all that up because I had asked Josh just about process here and whether or not this could be considered a minor amendment. One of those, it, it, one of the, you know, hard fast rules is if we're increasing density, we would I don't know if there's a threshold, but typically we'll go through a major amendment process. This being that we're reducing density at this point, we were asking that this could be a matter. But we'll do whichever. It really makes no difference to me. It's just less meetings.
Um, does staff agree with the lot count?
Well, if it's a, if it actually is a reduction by specifically identifying the estate lots and with the change from the townhome type lots or the attached unit to single family. Uh, we, we would again verify that, but that certainly is only one of the criteria that would change or be a basis for determining if it's a minor amendment. So the, the configuration of the street network would be another one, which is really I think not significant either. So we'll be evaluating each one of those criteria that would qualify for a major amendment and making a determination and a recommendation as to whether we're tripping the threshold. But at this point, I don't believe it does.
But, but at this point, I mean, major versus minor is circulation, density and use. Sure sounds like all of them.
One, one thing that we do have now with this proposal, state lots that they're showing as tracks on here is, and Nick may want to address that is the design of an easement to access those lots and that they have to have a certain type of design. Uh, might be able to achieve that, but shouldn't be too cumbersome to be able to achieve that. I don't believe.
Um, the only question I had is in some of the earlier discussions, I thought you were going to put a I thought you were going to split track five estate lot into two parts and you were going to have an access easement set aside between like lot six eighty four and six eighty five. It's up to you. It's just one less lot. You don't think that.
One of the earlier commitments was that they were, I think, a minimum of ten acres where it would be five acres by state law, not to plant the lot, but the previous entitlement required us to be minimum ten. So we're, I think that one is, I don't know what it is.
The track five was like twenty acres. It's huge.
It's, uh, it is big. It's thirty three, you know.
Thirty three acres, wow. Somebody's come by for him.
Yeah, theoretically, someone could, I guess, come back to you guys and ask to do something differently. We, we, we just saw a good spot for a house up on the hill. We didn't think the rest of it was a great spot for a house.
Yeah, and if you think theoretically somebody's going to come back and split track, was it five? Into two, then there needs to be an easement.
I, I don't think so. There is no intention for us to do that. We don't see, foresee anyone doing that. It just, based on purely the acreage, I guess, to your point, someone could divide it up more. If you look at the topography back there, as that wraps around those, those phase eight, it's just not great.
That's what I was wondering is if the lots of the topography behind six eighty, one through six ninety is just
it's just a hillside. I mean, frankly, we would have gotten twelve on here if we could.
I understand. No, I don't have any other issues.
I don't have problems.
Questions. Okay, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Number fifteen is Albert Gallison Avenue, Hat and Track Extension Project, street renaming. Council Engineering Division, Nick?
Yes, um, as you all know, we, we have a project that's under construction that we've called the Hat and Track Road Extension slash Albert Gallison Avenue Extension. Said a couple of names. It's, it's a new roadway that's, that's going across the, the old Bowles Farm to State Route one oh nine. And I think Josh got a slide that shows. So with that, we need to name the new roadway. We have shared this with the city council just to, to get their, their opinions if they wanted to come up with something new or not. And based on their feedback, we did go ahead and reach out to E nine one one a couple of times and have even gotten an approval on, on what I'm proposing here on tonight. And that is what you see on the slide here, which is actually a renaming of that segment C, which is the existing Albert Gallison Avenue to East Albert, Albert Gallison Avenue. Um, so that's the section that runs from Dobbins Pike down to thirty one E in front of the civic center. And so the numbering would stay the same, everything, everything looks the same. You just add the east designation to the roadway. Uh, that section that is labeled B on the map is currently named Northwater Avenue. And the city council was pretty reluctant to, to want to rename that because of the number of businesses and homes on that were in that stretch. And so after talking with E nine one one, they were, they were perfectly fine with keeping it the same. Um, so we're suggesting that it stay just as it is, Northwater Avenue and the numbering system stays there for it. And then the brand new section of roadway that extends across therefore it, and then the brand new section of roadway that extends across uh, the, the old Bowles Farm um, would be called West Albert Gallatin Avenue, um, which all this, for the most part, actually lines up with our Gallatin Municipal Code, which has a north-south divider roadway um, which was Northwater, um, and, and so you can see this all throughout the town, we see the east and west designations. Um, so the, the one thing that we did discuss uh, with E nine one one, that would be very important um, to, to both us and them, was that we would want to start the numbering for West Albert Gallatin Avenue at a high number so that it would never have any contradiction with those numbers that are on the east side. And so uh, we're looking at potentially starting at it, say the thousand block, and so any numbers on West Albert Gallatin Avenue would be one thousand and above. So, I, I think that we have it mostly worked out, but um willing to, to listen to any ideas or suggestions that, that you all have and um, our, our code requires that the planning commission give a recommendation here to send on to the city council.
Saying B is going to stay.
Yes, sir. That would need to be west since it's.
So you, you changed names of roads three times.
Yes. Go from thirty-one to one oh nine.
I guess my opinion is I, I get there's businesses out there that would have to change some things, but a little short-term pain to have one name on a road, golly, this makes more sense.
Yes, it does.
I don't think city council is going to agree with me, but.
They did change uh, Bligh Avenue to Dorothy Jordan back in two thousand eight or something like. So those names, obviously they had to uh, change their.
A good portion of section B is a, a, a very long spanned bridge that goes across railroad tracks. How many businesses are actually impacted by a, a name change?
It's a good question, um, I think it's, from a business standpoint, I think it's only two properties. But they have multiple addresses and multiple businesses.
Within the industrial buildings?
Right, there, there's several warehouses and things of that nature.
It's, that can be, I mean, is, is the concern of having to change the address that people can't find the business or mail has to change over?
I think it's, yeah, it's more, you know, titles, mail, uh, the legal documentation for the business, business cards. You know, stationary, things of that nature, I suppose, or.
Is it possible to duly name a road? I know that we have streets that are named after people, but they still retain their.
The question that I have not asked E nine one one.
But it's, it's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's true.
And in that downtown Nashville, they renamed a lot of Fifth Avenue.
Oh, we have. We have the Johnny Cash Parkway.
Ron Lewis Boulevard or Avenue.
Well, we do have, I think the Johnny Cash Parkway is more of a, an honor type of a name.
But it was the only one I could think of.
Yeah, well, we've got the Johnny Hayes Highway, it's just the north portion of thirty-one E going out of Gallatin. Um, those are more honorary names than they are actually, you're not putting that on your, your mail.
I, I mean, my, my personal opinion, my encouragement, I, I think the best thing long-term is to get this road to have one name to simplify it, that, you know. Inconvenient in the short term for a few people, but in the long term, makes a lot of sense.
I, I completely agree, I mean, I'm gonna hate driving that thing with the nav system on my car, go straight on Albert Gallatin. Don't go straight on Northwater, no, go straight on Albert Gallatin, it's, it's just, that's really confusing.
Question, how many of the properties that front the C portion or the A portion have to change their name or have to change their address?
None on A, um, but there, the ones on C would have to add the east Albert Gallatin Avenue, east to Albert Gallatin.
But not if you named it all Albert Gallatin. They wouldn't have to change anything, would they?
They would not, but the complicated thing with that is that the numbering for Albert Gallatin Avenue currently uh, begins at Northwater and runs to the east, because that's the, the north-south divide. And so that the one hundred block is, it starts at Northwater and, and runs up to, I think, around four hundred.
That's a problem.
So it, it, it kind of, it runs in the wrong direction, so if you wanted to call it Albert Gallatin Avenue, you, you'd have to you'd have to rename or readdress everyone.
Might can't be negative three hundred and twenty.
Right.
One hundred, two hundred as it goes to thirty-one E.
So is that how the numbering just always works as west to east?
Pardon?
Is that how the numbering just always works as west to east or just?
Well, so the way that the city was set up, is it, the, the zero started at that baseline. So if, if you're going or east of the baseline, then, then you're gonna, you're gonna be going up, if you're going west of the baseline, you're going up.
That's why you're calling it east.
So, yeah, the Northwater and Southwater, one oh nine, um, that was the baseline for Gallatin historically. Now, that doesn't necessarily work once you get into the western part of town where you don't really have a baseline and, and all, but um, but that's, that's how Gallatin was started.
Well, put this in bed unless somebody has a point, um. I think you ought to look into dual names like Bill suggested, try to get A and B both named West Albert Gallatin, so the baseline is Northwater. Well, you know.
I'll ask.
I, I agree, um, good luck.
Got one quick question, the Northwater from Bligh to Albert Gallatin, is it the same numbering issue as the Albert Gallatin?
It goes up. Well, it goes from, goes from east to west, so it goes from C to A, the numbers do.
Item number sixteen is uh, short-term rentals. Bill?
Okay, now, we have talked about the short-term rentals uh, quite a bit so far. And uh they, Matt had asked me to provide him a copy of the ordinance again. Want to make sure that uh, everyone had a copy of it, since he'd asked for it. So you have a copy in front of you, and uh, we also have, I believe, on your screen pan down here a little bit. Yeah, we do, here it is. Okay, it was added, okay. Yes, it was added today, so we have a couple of things here for you. Uh, talking about what we were going to allow as far as modifying our code, our zoning code to address short-term rental. The uh, it, I don't want to go through and, and mention everything that I've talked about previously, but short-term rentals are essentially created by the state legislature as a new process, separate from bed and breakfast. And it's essentially allowed anywhere in communities under the statute. However, communities can create uh, regulations that don't violate the statute. So many communities, you just can't ban them completely. Many communities uh, that, unless you adopted your ordinance before. Now, many communities have uh allowed them in commercial zoning districts and as I understood from council, that their intent was to uh, allow them only uh, in commercial areas and not allow them in residential areas, so we drafted an ordinance and you've seen this ordinance before, this draft ordinance, that essentially allows them in certain commercial areas mostly by right and or by conditional use. So this, this has not changed, and I know we've had some debate in this body as to whether or not you want to allow them uh, universally all over the city or where you would have wanted to restrict them as it's proposed in this ordinance, so uh, this is not so much, uh, this is kind of a preferential type of thing, it's not best practices or not, it's whether or not you feel that's inappropriate use in all districts or most districts in the city, or whether you think it should be restricted, so. That being said, uh, there is some materials here that we have, that we also provided to you earlier which describes uh, some other communities in Tennessee who have adopted a short-term rental ordinance, either before the state statute is adopted or even after, so. Uh, we do, and if you do intend to uh move forward with it, we do think that it would be best to apply some minimum design standards and then we provided those on pages eight, nine of the ordinance, so there would be addressed things like parking, there are other provisions in the code uh, that you have then in the handout that show what some other cities also restrict. But parking certainly would be one, uh, the number of people that would be allowed in a home based on the size of the home or number of bedrooms is also something that you might want to pay, pay close attention to. So uh and also, as I think I passed out before originally, there is a memorandum that was put out by the municipal advisory service, which describes what's allowed. This, misplaced it, what's allowed for short-term rentals and how, how that came about, so it's really the interpretation of the, the statute. So, you know, we have some from uh, the larger cities here as an example. And permitting process that they have to go through, and then some from the smaller cities as well. So it's really just your preference, what do you want to recommend? Uh, what kind of restrictions, if you do recommend, that you want to impose? You want to have different standards depending on which type of district it's located in, so. You know, you, you, for example, we have Signal Mountains proposal here, they allow uh, no parking on vegetated areas, so you don't have cars parked all over the yard. They would have that restriction.
So Latasha Alexander with the City Attorney's Office, I did want to share with you guys that um the Chancery Court of Sumner County recently found Hendersonville's uh, restriction to ban short-term rentals in residential areas unconstitutional. So that was decided uh, July twenty-seventh of this year, so that's something you all should take in consideration because as you all heard and have discussed, some are saying, no, we don't want them in residential, well, right now Chancery Court has said that's unconstitutional and you cannot do that. But I'm sure Hendersonville will probably appeal, but just know, as of right now, we do have a ruling that it's unconstitutional to do so.
Even though Hendersonville had the ordinance in place prior to the.
That is what the court say.
I have a question, so this originally was brought to the council by quote-unquote, a disturbed resident. Is, did we confirm that where the event was happening was in fact a short-term rental?
We don't, we don't have a register, registration for once, to get a business license, so.
But I guess what I'm saying is, is there an address of the original residence where the complaint was made? And did someone actually physically go in to see if it was a short-term rental, like go into the app, go into?
Now, we, I don't know about that particular complaint, it was just that that person who did complain to the council said it was being used as a short-term rental. Whether or not it was officially rented out through Airbnb or one of the other uh, apps or acts of companies that does that type of thing, I don't know. Most likely, though, they weren't registered and they weren't paying taxes and they didn't have a business license in the city. It's something that you can address with this, with an ordinance.
Response to your question, I think um, Councilwoman Love was, it's more of a, from my interpretation, which is preventative. Once, you know, other places are doing, should we look into this and because the city council asked for something, I think that's more.
Well, so. Well, I was gonna say, based on that, even though other places are doing it, it's preventative. So I've, I've done just a little bit of research and I guess the two main uh, I guess, platforms that you actually can register a short-term rental on is either Airbnb or VRBO. Um, and just doing a quick search on the amount of those in Gallatin that are registered on VRBO or Airbnb is, I think I counted six on VRBO and fifteen on Airbnb. And if you base that, and that's trying to get Gallatin as a whole, all areas. Um, if you base that on the, I guess, doing some round numbers on the fact that Gallatin's roughly fifty thousand people, a population standpoint, that's like point zero 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 five percent of Gallatin is short-term rental. So I, I I don't know at, at that rate if it makes sense to even have an ordinance at all, based on the fact that there's not that many of them. And if there aren't that many of them, then I think going along the lines of creating a registry or a platform for the city for people to sign up and do it the right way, it'd be fairly simple because there's not that many of them. And they would actually want to probably follow that and do it the right way.
I, you know, I, I've commented numerous times on this, I, I don't believe we should be restricting the property rights use of people in residential areas to use their home as an Airbnb if that's what they wish, and I think that's what the, the Chancery Court has also just ruled that we, we can't do that. So um so um
So then you couldn't prohibit, it didn't say you couldn't place restrictions on.
Exactly, yeah, and I'm, I'm not opposed to reasonable, you know, restrictions of business license and, and operating. Correctly, I think so, so uh, if, if they're allowed as a conditional use um, with the restrictions, you know, in residential areas, I don't, I don't see where the harm is in that, if if the, if the restrictions we were able to put in place as a conditional use enable us as a city to, if there's a bad actor, it's someone who's blatantly violating the, you know, the ordinance and, and, and not doing a good job of managing it, that we can, you know, remove that privilege. Yeah, but I, I think if, you know, we're, we're solving a problem that doesn't appear to be a problem and, and I don't, I don't think it's fair to all the citizens in Gallatin, their own property, to just say, you, you can't, you know you, you can't use your home as an Airbnb. You know, and, and we're seeing that, you know, the, that type of lodging, if you will, is becoming more popular, I've got several friends that when they travel they travel with their families and they use Airbnbs all over the country because it's a better way for their families to to travel together, and so, you know, and they're gonna be in residential areas. I guess, so my question is, what's, what is the harm in allowing short-term rentals with the reasonable restrictions to be a conditional use in all districts? I, I understand the need, I understand, I can understand the need to have an ordinance in place so that, you know, if, let's say, you know, we're to get out of hand that those are grandfathered properties and you have no ability to regulate them. Does that make sense, you know, but to just flat out say, you can't do it, I don't, I don't I don't think that would stand as a legal challenge in the first place.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to prohibiting uh, Airbnbs altogether, I bred to. I read through always, I just want to say, Bill, this, this is really good work with all these examples from different cities. I like some of the restrictions that you found in other cities, Signal Mountain being one of them, with the exception of that number one.
And Jim pulled that together.
Oh, who did?
Jim Carpenter out here.
Oh, good job, yeah, it was helpful. And matter of fact, Ms. Love, who, Councilwoman Love, who could not join us tonight. She did text and say, when it comes up for short-term rentals, I like the requirement for a local contact person. That's listed in the Knoxville and College Dale with, along with Chattanooga's added consideration that. Failure of the agent to respond within a certain period of time is, is a violation. I think that if you're gonna have short-term rentals, then the person doing that Airbnb needs to have a responsible party that responds to situations. Like in this case of this complaint that is wild party going on. There needs to be a responsible person, who, person who responds, and in the case of Chattanooga, if they don't respond within. I don't know, one of them is forty-five minutes, one of them is two hours. Then that's a basis, a repeated violation, that would be a basis for losing your conditional use permit to do this.
And, and that, that's reasonable.
Yeah, to have somebody on, no, Signal Mountains was not reasonable. They said that the proprietor and operator of the house, it has to be their primary house and they need to be on site the entire time. No, what about that? Yeah.
It's, that's a bed and breakfast without offering the breakfast.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question, so the, the state, the state code, you know. Page A, yeah, this, this references that there's a, you know, established short-term rentals. You know, that there's a, they could be revoked for actions that violate the, the state code. Does, what, what's the language of the state code, does it have actions that would shut down an Airbnb or an operator? If, if the state code already has some language in there that allows you to shut down the short-term rental for violating the state code.
I don't think it had any particular, it did.
But, you know, what this says is, you know, that prior, prior ones. Shall be permitted to remain in operation unless said units are disqualified for such use due to a violation of operating as described to Tennessee code. Annotated thirteen dash seven dash six oh three.
It just says, is, is there been a violation of a generally applicable local law three or more times? Or separate times as provided for in, in the following section. Then that's the basis for revoking their, their license, it doesn't get into the specific behavior, though.
So, so, but it didn't say violating a local law more than three times, that? Okay, so if we have a, a local.
Noise ordinance, now, keep in mind, somebody's gotta enforce this, and the noise ordinance things when someone slams the door at twelve o'clock at night. Or howls out the window. We're not there to monitor that, that noise, if that, if that exceeded the certain decibel level at that time of night. So catching them in the act, if you will, is gonna be very difficult. Enforcement of some of these provisions or these restrictions that you place on there that are related ways and so forth. It's gonna be very difficult, if not impossible, to enforce.
Is that?
That could occur anywhere, I mean. I, I think on one night, there were fireworks going off somewhere on a Saturday night. It was the same night they had the Garth Brooks concert that got rained out. Somewhere, someone decided to shoot off a whole bunch of fireworks and so forth, now, sure that didn't comply with the. I don't know if y'all heard them, but that didn't comply with the noise ordinance. Permit issue for those two, so. So keep in mind that every time you, when you have these regulations or restrictions. That you're placing on them, someone's gonna have to go out there and inspect those things, so they need to be something that's. For less, a permanent type thing, such as the number of parking spaces and what those parking spaces would constitute. So you don't have someone parking all over the street, or that you don't have more than, and even that is hard to, to enforce. How many guests you're gonna have in a house, so if you have four bedrooms, maybe you can have a maximum of eight people or so. Not fifty that show up, not that people don't have parties. So keep in mind that that's who's staying there, who's a guest there. It really makes it kind of difficult to apply this stuff, so.
I've got a condition on there.
Want to on the short-term rentals, that's the whole thing, it's kind of like, what does the city want to do? Like, most things that occur in the city that's of that magnitude, sometimes they do require liability insurance. I'm not sure if we'll want to, but.
It would be a matter of whether homeowners insurance covers.
Cause it's not really.
It'd be between them and their homeowners insurance companies. Question on, on page eight, on the short-term rentals item four, so not permitted to operate a short-term rental unit adjacent to property. Primarily used for residential purposes, other than short-term rental. So would that then prohibit the use of a short-term rental in MRO zoning that's adjacent to residential neighborhood?
Which part on number eight, on page eight?
Number eight. Section C, item four. So it's on OCO, the, it lists.
Yeah, it would, if you were in MRO, yeah, it would prohibit. It next to the residential, if it were, if there were a non-residential use adjacent residential.
Essentially, it still limits it, so.
Yeah, keep in mind, this is a very restrictive ordinance, this one that you see before you, and probably needs a lot more work. But I need some direction as to where you want to go with it. We can loosen it up and allow them out everywhere with common restrictions. We do have some provisions in here that allow them as a conditional use, do you want to send them that route or allow to use by right? Where they simply come in and make application and they can be approved relatively quickly. If they go to conditional use, they're gonna be scheduled to a board. And then there's notices out to the adjacent property owners and the board has to address it, so it could take a lot longer. Send it through that process.
The only reason I wanted to say it was a conditional use was so that their conditional use could get revoked. If the police have to constantly respond to the particular property, so.
Yeah, now, we could do that, whether it's conditional use or not.
Oh, can you?
The statute allows for, you know, if it's a nuisance, becomes a nuisance because of multiple violations. Then you can essentially revoke them without involving the conditional use.
But also recognize the other side of that is that if there's an adjacent property owner. Who just doesn't like the fact that this has been rented out as Airbnb, then he calls the police once a week and says the door slammed at midnight.
Well, and the statute addresses that, so these bogus calls. What, what, what is a bogus call, I don't know. Those folks can be. Action taken against those people, so if you just don't want it, you don't like, you don't like the aspect that people are. Transit people are coming in using the property adjacent and you just can't make up stuff.
But this.
There's a penalty against those.
This draft addresses that.
No, that's in the state law, we don't have to. We, we don't have to readdress the state law in our.
I guess it, it might be, it might be good, can we get a copy of the state law? I think that might.
I did provide that.
If you understand what's in the state law and how it already provides guidance and enforcement, then it might help us. Provide better guidance on how to write ordinance.
Yeah, I, I did provide that initially, but it's been a while since y'all saw it, I think it was two or three months ago. We did that, it's not very long, it's not a very long statute, so we can provide that certainly.
I, I'd like to spend some time reviewing that.
Is that something then that we, we will provide that information on the next agenda package? And you'll have adequate time to review that and discuss that at the regular meeting, so we can take action and kind of format the ordinance at that time. Is that what you would be willing to do, or do you have a lot more work session time?
I'd prefer to have it on another work session after having time to review that, so we can talk about it less formally than in a, than in a meeting.
We'll tell you that the common thing I saw for all these that I really like, and I think I hear everybody liking it is, there needs to be. Person, a responsible party who responds within one hour.
Agree with that.
And it's, it needs to be a responsible party who is a decision maker, somebody who can take action on the thing, not Billy Bob. Who is uncalled for ten bucks an hour to go say, I'm not the owner, but I'm supposed to fix the lights when they break, you know.
Yeah, I think it's two hours in Chattanooga and, and maybe thirty minutes in College Dale, so you're probably somewhere in between that.
One of them gave a definition of what is a responsible person. Well, it said that they could make a decision maker. A lot of them were thirty minutes or one hour, but anyway, that aspect of it, I think everybody's in agreement that that fixes a lot of issues.
That would go a long way to help them with it.
Yep. Any other discussion on that?
I, I don't, did, Bill, did they give you guidance on whether to bring it back for another work session or the next meeting?
Uh, that would be something I would need to provide me, references on that. No counsel's probably waiting on it, but. Probably the planning department, that's when no one else wants to enforce it. It'll be in conjunction with the police department because the nature of potential complaint. We will be reviewing it for, say, parking spaces and stuff. We're not gonna go out, I can tell you now, we're not gonna go out at eleven or twelve o'clock at night. Because there's fifteen people in a house that is an Airbnb that's only supposed to have eight because they have four bedrooms. I'm not gonna be here to do that.
I'll, I'll, I'll just put it out and you guys can tell me if everybody wants to, right? I think we need to, everyone needs to read the state law and understand what its impact is. And we'd have a conversation about how we really want to do this in a work session, rather than trying to hash it out at a formal voting meeting. And, and, and do that, but I think we need to bring it back to a work session, not try to hash that out at a, at a voting meeting.
Okay, that's, that's a month out.
Okay, well, if you know, we do that.
And there's, there's thirty of these properties in Galton, and I don't, I don't think anybody's.
We will send all this information that we, I think we've sent before back out to you. So that you can study it and be prepared at the work, next work session. Hopefully you'll be able to have time then to mark up the things you like, or strike through the things you do not like. And you can make motions to incorporate or not incorporate various regulations within the ordinance. It'd be the easiest way for me to do it, because I know y'all have a lot of, a variety of opinions as to where you want to go with this. And it's very difficult for me to try to, to kind of subjectively judge. What should be included in this ordinance without something specific being given to us.
One final question, so given the information, given the information that we heard today. Where the case, I guess the municipality lost, or they voted that it was unconstitutional. Was the stance still to move forward with a document that prohibits short-term rental?
Can a prohibit. And restrict.
But again, city council's gonna do what city council wants to do with this. Regardless, but they're gonna be made aware, like, again, this is a new case, so they're gonna be made aware of the case. And hopefully that will help them with their direction on what they want to do as far as short-term rentals.
But this document would prohibit it in residential zonings?
Is it written now?
Correct.
And the intent is not to change that.
I don't think anyone here intends to vote in favor of the document that prohibits residential zones. I can't, well, I can only say for myself, I don't.
But if city council decided that's the direction they want to take, then until it's challenged, that's the direction the city would take.
Where, that's, that's where we come in, our, our jobs to have these debates and advise city council on, always, because we, we have the time. And, you know, we, we dive into it on a deeper level, level than they're able to.
Though you want specifics, do you want us to send that to you, a piece mail and emails so that you put something together?
If you want to, that's fine. I can include all of these restrictions that maybe y'all agree to, or each, each one of you identifies as something you would like to see in the ordinance. And I can populate the ordinance with all of those restrictions, and then you can go through at the meeting and say, yeah, we'll keep that one. No, we'll kick that one out and so forth.
That's what I want to do, send, everybody sing kind of their little dream draft. Or do we sit here and try to come up with it in a eight-hour work session?
I, I'm not, I don't, I don't have a problem sending in some emails with just, you know, restrictions. And, and then, if we are putting it all on the list and we can talk about which ones make sense, which ones get rid of them.
But you want to do that in a work session next, the, the September work.
But in advance, well, I mean, I know my, mine don't have like two bullet points, one is responsible party within, that responds within an hour. And the second bullet point will be, in the event of an intermittent noise ordinance, that's hard to capture with our noise ordinance. That the city planner conduct an all-night stakeout in his personal vehicle.
Well, a noise, again, if it's a noise ordinance, it, it applies no matter whether it's a, a resident that's long-term resident at that location. Or, or short-term resident, it doesn't matter, so that's still, we don't need to get, we don't need to.
My, my list will have too few because I like John's.
Okay. Item number seventeen is food trucks zoning ordinance amendment.
Okay, we, we've talked about this before as well, I believe, and city council was moving forward right now with an ordinance. To amend the city code of ordinances to allow food trucks, it has been through a first reading already. Their ordinance is pretty lucrative for a food, food truck business that would allow a food truck to operate three sixty-five. Seven days a week, essentially eighteen hours a day roughly, I think, is that right? Like five o'clock in the morning to eleven at night, almost longer than some brick and mortar restaurants. So that was kind of how they are going with this, and there's two aspects of it, there's the municipal code. And we were kind of waiting for the council to take action and give us direction on what restrictions and so forth. That would be allowed in the municipal code, and they, again, they're close to second reading on that before we open the door to. Zoning code so that we don't create some sort of inconsistency. So the city attorney's office has worked on this ordinance and made some modifications to it. And really, what we would end up doing is just changing the temporary use permit. Description in our code, it would be a unique temporary use permit, and they would only be charged, I think it was a hundred dollars, isn't that correct? Okay, well, I, as I understand, be a fee, it would be unlike any other temporary use permit. And they would pay a one hundred dollar fee, let's say, I think that's pretty much or something that, that, that is subject to change, let me put that. That is possibly subject to change based on what happens at the second reading. But they would be charged that hundred dollar fee and would be able to essentially roam around the city and, and set up shop anywhere. That zoning would allow and or on the streets. And then there would be a separate fee and a permitting process for food truck rallies, which is. I believe they were debating that, I think four or more trucks at any one location. So if you had two trucks at a same location, you wouldn't need a food truck rally permit in addition to the food truck permit. Individual food truck permit, but I'm sorry. Choked up here. So anyhow, what we would want to focus on is just the zoning aspects of it. And we would create a special temporary use permit that would mesh well with the. And we would create a special temporary use permit that would mesh well with the city ordinance. So there is some unique features about the food truck ordinance that don't apply to other people who are vending food on the side of the road or whatever. So a food truck would essentially have a truck and/or a trailer that has a health department-approved kitchen. So someone who has a big grill or smoker and just wants to pull off on the side of the road and start cooking hamburgers or barbecue or whatever, probably is not going to fall into the food truck portion of the ordinance. They'll simply be, be a lot of things, but they'll, they will fall under just a temporary use transient vendor. Yes, it's very complicated because they wanted to create a special opportunity for food, certain food truck vendors. So that's why they're being separated out. Even though they're still a temporary use, they're being separated out and treated differently than other food vendors that may be operating in the city. So that's, that's somewhat complicates it and we have to come up with a enforcement process as well as an application process to, to do that. Now, these food trucks, as it's written there right now, city ordinance would be allowed to operate almost anywhere that the zoning will allow it. So any commercial zone that they can move on to a property, and the best one I can use as an example is the Harbor Freight down here because it has an improved parking lot. They have excess parking. There's, they can only take up four parking spaces within that parking lot. So it's real intricate as to the restrictions that they would have for food truck, for, for parking spaces. Now, if they took up five, I guess we could enforce it, something against them. But and then they would be allowed to operate early in the morning up to late in the evening to be able to accommodate businesses that have three shifts. So maybe some of our industrial properties, the hospital and things like that, so.
Because what we will do. Stay in the same place for weeks at a time, or does it move every?
They have to move every night. So they have to pack up as, say, at eleven o'clock, if that's the closing time, and take their truck somewhere. Can't park it where they did. Now, where are they going to park it? I don't know. And then, but they can come back the next morning. I will provide you a copy of the ordinance that the city council adopts so that you will be able to read through that before you consider the actual zoning part of it. So the zoning part of it will be important though because that will restrict certain zones that they can locate in. It also, the city ordinance would re, would not regulate food trucks that are on private property and not open to the public. So if you have a private club or your homeowner's association comes in with a food truck or you have a private party with a food truck, that's not subject to the regulations.
Did I remember you saying that zoning does not apply to within the public right of way?
Zoning does not. So the ordinance, the city ordinance would address that. So yes, and that would be allowed too. You could set up a food truck, say, in a parallel parking space and open the window open to the sidewalk part. You obviously wouldn't want to open it to the travel lanes. That would create a dangerous situation. So we will give you a copy. And I know we've seen this before and underline a strike-through version. And once the city council adopts, which they might do, as early as next week, that ordinance, then that will be the basis from how we fabricate the details in the zoning part of it.
So I'm, I'm sorry, just help me to understand. I, I now understand there's an ordinance. Only doesn't affect what's in the public right of way, but food trucks are almost always in the public right of way unless they're on private property for a private event, in which case doesn't apply to this. Why do we need a zoning document?
Well.
Why not just an ordinance?
Because there's a use, involves a use. So we're not, we don't want to allow food trucks to set up on and open to the public in, say, a residential area.
Okay.
So they, we would restrict them to commercial industrial areas. The institutional facilities like the college, of course, out there.
If the street's been dedicated, then that zoning document that we create doesn't really.
They're operating in the street. They're under the municipal ordinance only. Once they get on the private property, they're under the zoning code.
Parking lot zoning code on the public street or dedicated street ordinance.
So, but this, this would stop a food truck from driving through Fairview Plantation, stopping on the public right of way and setting up shop.
Yeah. Well, no.
Well, if they are there for a private event, then it is not regulated by the ordinance. Ice cream truck driving through, they are regulated by the municipal ordinance. And believe it or not, yes, ice cream trucks are treated and they have different rules.
That was my next question was.
If you're selling barbecue versus selling ice cream.
So one question I do have, so on page six, it's got item two, the transient vendors, mobile pedestrian vendor sales, including mobile food vendors. The mobile food vendor, is that what we're talking about as a food truck or is that something different?
Yeah, we're going to strike that out of there and create a number three, a separate paragraph that will only be for mobile food vendors.
Okay.
So they'll be different from the transit vendors and mobile pedestrian vendor sales.
Because that's my question.
Striking the food truck part out of there.
Yeah, because in the, in the, in the restrict, the restrictions that are on that, you know, it's, you know, B was no more than three sales permitted on any one lot parcel track in a calendar year. That would seem like it wouldn't work very good for food.
Yeah, so that, that's still, that still will apply to transient vendors, but not to food trucks.
That makes sense.
So someone who wants to set up and I'm in, you know, there's, there's some folks that bring, you know, most people, I guess, call them peddlers or something, but they'll set up and sell towels and sheets or sheets, flags, velvet elvices and stuff like that. They would be restricted to this provision here. And we did, we are adding some things. I do want to mention this is just not food trucks and transit vendors. We are having a little bit of cleanup stuff to our temporary use permits provisions here, so. Conflicting language in here. So we're striking out some because it's being covered under another paragraph, so. You know, pay attention to those changes too, even though they're not related specifically to food trucks. There are changes to the temporary use permit considered. Lot of fun. This is not the kind of stuff I like doing at all. But I guess it has to be done because we get, you know, the one thing that we'll bring up is that oftentimes, most of those places that you see out there, the transit vendors and whether they're selling food or selling whatever wares, they don't have a license, they don't have a business license. They're not, they're not, they don't care about this ordinance. They're just out there setting up and we don't know about them and it's a, it's an enforcement issue.
Is the rally clause primary function of the rally clause a way to get those kind of vendors registered that you otherwise wouldn't know about?
Yeah, because, you know, the rally is going to draw a lot more people. It's more inviting a larger group of people. And those are usually special, associated with a special event. So they might have something out at the civics in a parking lot or, you know, they have a food, I don't know what they call it, food rally, maybe or something where not just food trucks, but businesses from around the community will go out there and we'll example their menu. And then special events like street fair and maybe a sporting event or something like that.
I'm thinking you're never going to catch all the miscellaneous food truck vendors or get them to enroll in the system, but you could probably do a quick drive-through of the rally and.
Yeah, there'll be a sticker that has to be put on.
Okay.
To ensure that the rally participants, not only do the rally have to get approval, but the, each of the individual food vendors, food trucks will have a sticker that's inspected yearly by the building department and they'll have to also have health department.
So.
Have a review.
We'll vote on a draft of this in two weeks and.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not.
We'll, we'll have to see. Council meeting will be like five days in advance. So we'll see what we can pull together based on what council does. Now, council may may defer it again. They, they do have it scheduled for tomorrow's meeting for additional discussion. So they may have it ironed out by then. And if so, we'll certainly include that ordinance that they approved and the corresponding changes that we'll be making to the draft that you've already gotten so that there's no inconsistency there. Uh, that technically we should be a transit vendor, but I'm sure they probably don't. I don't recall us issuing a temporary use permit for the vendors in the parade. Yeah. I don't think we have.
They were saying the difference between a food truck and a transient vendor is there's actual kitchen onboard of a enclosed unit.
Well, under, if we're done with that one, under item number eighteen, other business, a discussion of the planning commission bylaws and vision statement.
Okay, one thing I'll need to tell you all, which you probably already know because I've mentioned it many times, you are now officially a municipal planning commission. No longer is are you a regional planning commission. And so because of that, there is no regional board of zoning appeals anymore as well. Folks have lost their job. And but what we've talked about before is because we, we thought it would be a good transition is that once the plant, regional planning commission is sunsetted and we are now just a municipal planning commission, is that we would not only change our bylaws to address the title change, but we also review those. So y'all have had a chance to look those over a few times now. We've delayed that. Usually if it gets to the point in the meeting where you're here lately where we didn't have enough time or, but we have those bylaws. I know you may not have them with you now, but we'll need to consider adding to those what you, you, we did in the draft form. We had some additions that you wanted to address as well as the title change. So I don't know if you're willing or wanting to speak about that now. You may not have brought that material with you because it is somewhat dated since our last discussion.
So is one result of this change that one hundred percent of the members of the planning commission must be, must be live within the city limits?
Try. Yeah, so all of you, I hope, live inside the city limits. So there, we don't have a requirement that one of you live outside in the planning region because it doesn't exist. That's why CJ's here. Wow, finally.
Other than that, the only change should be just making sure that we go through and change our bylaws to get rid of the word municipal and regional, just change it.
Well, y'all did have a few other things that you wanted to add and we did that in a draft. And if y'all were comfortable with what we've added in the last draft that we showed you, we'll bring it back and you can vote on it next, in two weeks if you wish.
Can you send that out? Just refresh my memory on.
Yeah, we'll do. As Josh mentioned with the other item, we can send that out. So you'll have plenty of time. We'll send it out earlier. I don't think we're going to make any other changes in what we've already made. And we'll send that earlier so you get a little more time than our normal time to review that.
So I do have a.
And there's no rush. I mean, you don't have to adopt them next two weeks.
Sorry, we've met for a long time. I'll make this a quick question. When we have a public comment, are we required to let someone speak? You know, somebody, when they come up to the podium and public comments, they're supposed to list their name and their address. And they're supposed to be, they're supposed to reside within our, up till now, our regional or municipal planning region. And somebody from another town, can they speak in a public comment?
I think that's up to y'all.
And where I'm going with that.
Sometimes people will come to represent somebody. Obviously, we have clients that are being represented by engineering firms that are outside of town or.
Well, yeah, that's true. And is the public comment intended to be for the public in our area? And the reason I'm asking the question is now that we're just municipal and not a municipal and regional, it would limit the comments to just people in the municipality?
I don't think I'm comfortable with that because when we're talking about annexing property, if we're going to annex something that's outside of the city limits, then they're, then we would be telling the residents in the area they can't talk. So that would not be fair, I don't think, or legal based on the attorney's facial expression.
Open to anyone and everybody. Got it. That's the way it is. Should be.
One other thing, I guess we're on announcements now. Their business. If, if we move to announcements, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that on the twenty twenty-third twenty-fourth, excuse me, on the twenty-fourth at four o'clock, there will be a joint planning commission meeting with the council. And there will be a presentation of the comp plan. And this is part of the public participate, not public participation, this really just for consumption by the planning commission and the city council on the status of the comp plan and where GNRC will be doing this mostly.
That's on the twenty-fourth of August.
Twenty-fourth, it's Tuesday afternoon at four, four to six. Yeah, four to, four to six. So make sure you get that, mark that down. And also related to that, GNRC has a really, I'll call it a preliminary draft of the comp plan right now. And this comp plan that they're developing is not like our current comp plan in many ways. Some, some ways it's better, but in a lot of ways, it's a lot different. It's more like a coffee table. I call it a coffee table version where it has a lot more pictures and a lot less specificity about direction of where properties and so forth should be considered. What issue shouldn't be considered and less of the design aspects, the detailed design aspects, which will be left to subdivision regulations and stuff. So I want you to be able to read it. So we will get that to you also. If you, it's a pretty long document. I don't know if you want it. I don't know if we can send it by email. Josh, do you know if we can send that by email?
You can send the link and then you have to
Yeah.
log in and put your email into it. So you can't just send it by email.
Well, we'll get it to you, but if you would like a paper copy of what we have, we can certainly do that.
Just the same.
That was presented earlier, the last Tuesday? When, is that what they presented last to the panel?
Yeah.
There's a link and you don't have to use.
Well, the, okay, if there's a link and y'all want access to that link, we'll just get you that link. If you want a paper copy, we'll get, we'll get that for you as well.
I was like, I didn't Suzanne send that out. Yeah.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, dude. We, that was, that's why I was confused. I think I.
Let us know if you want a paper copy. We can get that for you too. But if the link is, serves you good, then that's good. But I just want y'all to have an opportunity to get prepared and start looking through that and come up with ideas or questions that you have at this stage. I mean, there's a lot, still a lot of work to be done, a lot of work to be done. But this is where we're going, I guess.
I think if there are no other announcements, then. Some of them. some of them. Did you have sleep?
No.